This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for April 6th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. Let's please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. We have a, basically, a budget hearing meeting tonight. We have invited Finance to join us, and I don't know if anybody is coming from Finance. Have we?
It's not officially a hearing, right?
It's not a hearing. Did I say that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Budget, well, no, it's not an official hearing. We're hearing people's budgets. It's a budget meeting, if you want to call it. Sorry.
All right, just want to be clear about that.
It's not hearing with a capital H, no. So if some of the Finance folks join us, then they will obviously join in on any questions. But any open time for the public to start with? All right, hearing none. We have no hearings. We have no presentations or reports to the Select Board. So let's just jump right into it. And the first bullet here I see is just the FY '24 estimated revenues. Do you want to talk about that first, or go into the?
Let's just go.
Go into the meetings? Okay. All right, so first one up is Cemetery Commission Budget Request.
Robert Foley, College Highway Cemetery Commissioner, Clerk. Here to talk about the 2024 budget. We have some items, chump change, real small amounts. 7,450 in total, 1,500 for Holmberg &amp; Howe, mapping a new section, 1,000 for aluminum pins to mark grave sites, $250 for seasonal signs, 600 for maintenance of tools, acquisition of new tools, 3,000 for tree work, 600 for cemetery management training, fees, meals, mileage, and 500 for bushes pruning on the north and west borders. And I'll go through each category. We've been mapping a new section. We're going to call it Section 12. It's adjacent to High Street, and there isn't enough room for a road. There may be for emergency vehicle maintenance, but it may be a nice area to walk through. We have it surveyed already, and we'd like Holmberg &amp; Howe to come back this year and maximize the number of sites for everyone, and make it safe and make it pleasant. There's some old growth trees that we would like to keep, and perhaps a cremation wall, which is something some cemeteries have. It's basically a wall of many designs with outlets, if you will, for cremation remains. And it conserves space, and this is something we think for our future and for where our society is going, that might be something we'd like to, you know, consider. 1,000 for aluminum pins. These are shaped like the sole of your foot, and it has a spike. So you literally step on it and squish it in the ground, and we use four of them on each corner of the plot. So 10-foot by 3-foot by 6, and 3-foot 6 inches. And some get removed, some get torn up perhaps in mowing or that type of a thing. We get them every so many years. We used to get them for maybe $6 or so from Apex and Agawam Foundry, and the president of the company would come out, meet me in the back door, and hand me the box, and because we were too small to go through the front door. They're closed. We have to find a new source. But we're running out of them. We have an expanded Section 11 way in the back on the right. We need to plot that out with pins. We found some new, not old, old areas that we have surveyed, and we think there may be a plot here, a plot there. So we need the pins. Seasonal signs. This is basically for the public to notify them, you know, tree damage, stay clear, please don't trim the hydrangeas, please remove your winter decorations. We've been talking about these signs for years and just never had it in a budget since we didn't have it in a budget. We at Level Funded about $2,700 each year, and we just never invested in them. But there's something that we could use year after year after year. Tools, maintenance and acquisition, 600. We'd like to do some of the work ourselves. If a small branch is down, we'd like to lob it off. We like to trim here and there. Some people have plants, some little trees, bushes. They're there. We're not going to dig them up. So raking, sometimes dirt from a truck or passing vehicle debris gets on a site. We'd like to rake it and hoe it. We don't have any tools. We have some old ones that are probably rusty, and maybe we could salvage them. But that's what that amount is for. Tree work. Back in, sorry, back in 2016, we asked for $2,000 for 2017 budget stating the large trees in Section 9 and 10 are dying. We need an annual amount of at least $2,500 to begin the process of cutting and removal. The threat of falling branches is very real and could result in injuries to walkers and to the monuments. And we have, since we prepared this amount, we've had some heavy damage from the last storm. And we don't have the resources to remove them ourselves. We don't have the budget to remove them ourselves, even though we asked for $3,000. That was under the umbrella of planning, maintenance. Now we have cleanup, and that's more immediate than not. The pruning the bushes, oh, no, I skipped one. Cemetery management training. We haven't been in a workshop for years. We have a new member. We have new mythology of running a cemetery. We want to convert our careful hand entering into digital. I volunteered a couple of years ago, if we ever get the software for that, to start the process. We want green burials. We want to invite somebody here in the rest of town about green burials. So there's a lot of information out there that we believe we can only get going to a conference like everyone else. And this would be fees and mileage and meals. And the pruning of the bushes, we have on the north side of the cemetery, the north boundary, we have a lot of bushes coming through, and they need to be trimmed every year. People complain rightly so that the overgrowth goes across their ancestors, gravestones and the like. We realized that we could salvage a section, the most western part of the cemetery, northwestern, what we call Section 11. We've added another section with no cost to the town, no cost to us. And we noticed there was just a lot of debris, growth, invasives. So having that cut back gives us a whole row of maybe, I don't know, 14 or so grave sites or more. So that would need to be maintained every year.
All right.
Questions?
So this represents, we're looking at a $5,900, $5,950 change from last year's budget.
Yes.
Okay, questions, open.
And what we didn't add, I'm sorry. What we didn't add, my bad. We didn't add the normal supplies that we have, the D2 liquid that we use to clean the stones, the paint for the fence. Somehow or other, we just forgot that in the meetings. Yes?
There's no revenue posted for '21, '22, or '23.
Oh, that was my, you mean the number?
Yeah. Because we have '20 up to '21, but no '22, '23.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was my bad in not submitting it.
So what?
We were Level Funded $2,700 for each of those years.
You're talking about the revenue?
The revenue.
Sale of plots.
You didn't have any in '22?
We sold 10 lots last year. The 600, the $6,000 would have been the revenue that would have come in. And that was about the number of the year before.
Okay.
We're expecting more. More people that we personally know are in nursing homes and assisted living. We wish them long lives, but we believe there may be somewhat of an exponential increase in burials.
So just to clarify, so $6,000 equals 10 lots for 2022?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And actually, 2021's already on here, 89, 6, 8906.
And then of each 600, 450 goes into sale of cemetery lots, which we learned the other night that to use those funds, we would have to go to a town meeting. In 2011, when it was transferred, we were never informed. So it was really a shock. We haven't.
I would say it could also be, it could go to town meeting by way of the budget as a funding source, not as its own item, but part of the whole budget. We could say, because was there 16,000 sitting in there above and beyond the principal? Whatever the number is, that's above and beyond the principal, that could be used to offset some of this. So it, and that, those, so the sale of lots are $600 apiece?
Yes.
Of which you take 450 of that 600 and place it into?
450 for sale lots and 150 for perpetual care. And good half of the cemetery never had perpetual care. So it isn't like we had the income from each of the lots that are there.
So in theory, at the end of every year, those funds are deposited into your trust funds?
Which we understand, yes. We didn't know there was a trust fund until the other night. We've been keeping those funds as sacred because we intend to expand the cemetery beyond the new Section 12, and we would need every penny of those funds. So we've really bent over backwards not to use those funds through the years, because when we will need it in the future, that's the money we're going to need for seed money to start the expansion of the cemetery.
Okay. If we can just, everybody raise hands so I can see who's got to thank you. Donna, welcome for coming. Go ahead.
I'm just confused about the cemetery perpetual care is the trust fund, the one that's not available?
Right.
That you can only spend the interest, so you earn things, not the principal. So if 100 and something dollars for every sale of lot goes into perpetual care, they should really make a deposit into the trust fund. You can designate it as your earnings, like expendable or the principal. So it should really be added to the principal. The sale of lots, I'm not sure what the, that's not the same as perpetual care. That looks like it's like a revolving account.
Yeah. I think it's in the revolving, it's only the perpetual care that's the trust fund, as far as I understood it the other night when we had our meeting.
But it really should be turned over such that it should be owed, that those funds should be generating more, adding to the principal of the trust fund, so that it continues to grow.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, what a lot of communities do, is exactly what Donna's saying, is the portion that goes in the perpetual, you go and you designate it as principal, so it goes in there. So your principal's always growing, and that you can't spend for every lot you sell. But then spending off earnings. Now, under Pathology Mules discussion last week, that's 1% because CPA money's in there. If we pulled the CPA money out, then you could adjust that and potentially get the 3% to 4% that the other funds are currently getting, which isn't a lot of money, but it still adds up over time. But the cemetery lots is a separate, it's a revolving account that should be set in that you're basically free to, in theory, you're free to use it during the year as part of your budget. So it could be a funding source for the budget. But it has its own section of Master No Law that covers it. And I'm sure if you ask the treasurer for it, she could give you a copy of those two sections.
Yep.
You would have to designate it at town meeting.
Could I use some microphone, please, Donna? You got to bring it right into your mouth.
Yeah.
You would have to kind of make an article, just like other revolving funds are at town meeting, as to how much you can spend of that.
Okay, this is all new to us. We haven't met as a commission to discuss the concepts of this, but I understand what you're saying.
Because just right now, on the revenue report, projections for this year, I think, is it not 1350 as the estimated revenue for cemetery plots, the way I'm reading that? And that's?
That's what's in the budget.
That's what's in there, well, I mean?
Well, Bradley sent out to us.
The estimated revenue for cemetery plots? Is that, that's it? 1350? Has that been?
No, currently, as of December 31st, '22, how much?
Actually.
How much has been received?
Yes.
Okay. Not what's budget, what's been received. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay. Yeah, okay. Francine, do you have a question?
No, I asked it.
Francine has a question. I think you mentioned this the other night, Robert, but can you explain a little bit of the history on the care of the trees and bushes?
Oh, the, the trees are down and branches, and one whole tree, and?
But I mean, who, the Highway Department used to take care of a certain amount, just mowing, or who's historically?
That's interesting. We dug deep into our pockets, 2018, in the fall, to take care of some cedars. And it was, it was seven trees and seven stump removal, like 5,700 or something to that effect. Right now, we don't have money in a budget to take care of the damage. So the concept is, for years, we used to do the mowing, and the town would mow it, and then we'd get a private mower, and then the town mowed it again. And then we realized as a town that it's the town's responsibility, not the Cemetery Commission, to mow the grass, because it's town land. If that logic remains valid, then trees grow out of that same soil that the grass is growing, and it's the town's responsibility to take care of the trees and not the Cemetery Commission. Again, a point of view, a logical point of view I'm presenting.
Well, with that fall, I'm just looking, we just got the revenue and expense report today.
And if we, if we were successful in having this in our budget for town meeting, and the vote was successful, we wouldn't see that income until after July 1st. And there is a need now to take those trees down, off the gravestones, and hopefully in time for Memorial Day festivities at the cemetery.
We have 33.7% spent from tree warden expenses on a $15,000 budget, which was doubled last year. I don't know if that's?
But I, I thought the number that we put in there, Ron had already had it denified in work orders, ready to go.
Yes, the funds for Holmberg for the list of trees can still be taken down.
Okay. Yeah, the current Cemetery Commission expenses, if that's where some of this would be put normally, right?
Yes.
So that was budgeted at 1,500, and as of the current report, you've got about $600, $660 left to be spent out of that.
Yes.
Right now.
And we normally spend most of our monies this time of the year for work in the summer. You know, after the winter, there's a lot of need for whatever we need to do.
Just don't forget to save enough for your water bill.
Yes, the water bill too. We didn't put that in the budget. And we're still getting billed, even though the water piping purchase order isn't placed, and we haven't repaired the lines. We're still getting billed for water usage.
That's right.
I know, we're paying it. Yeah.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about the expansion, the new section now?
The new section is the Section 12.
Is this the Huntley property?
No, no, no. That's a whole separate issue, and that's what we want to save our trust funds for and large monies for that, because that's on the back burner. But this one's immediate. We walked it. We voted on it. We brought in a surveyor. They came back and surveyed it. So the entrance would be through the center cemetery, not from High Street.
Right.
But it does, it's adjacent to, one end of it is adjacent to High Street. So if you walk to the back of the cemetery and you took a left, you can meander right now through the bushes and through the trees. And it'll work. It's flat, and why not?
It's kind of on the way to the old Cedarhurst Pond.
Ah, okay, yeah.
Basically, those of us who?
Yeah, yeah.
That used to exist. Yeah, okay.
All right.
All right.
You've done that. I haven't, but yeah.
Yeah, okay, got it.
And we, we don't want to flat top it and have it, you know, all concrete. We want to put some benches maybe in here and there, but we do want to maximize the usage. We did Section 11 by hand, and that was from hunger. Charlie Gorle, when he was alive, helped us tremendously, but that's not the way to do it. And so we really need a surveyor to maximize. You can get three grave sites here. On the other side of the big old grove tree, you can get five, you know, that type of thing.
Just one question. I think you mentioned that the sale of the plot is $600, is that right?
600.
Has that changed over time? Is that?
It has. It's gone up. It used to be 450, and we interviewed, researched, researched other towns around, and we felt 600 was affordable and feasible, and so we raised it to 600.
And how long ago was that?
Four years-ish ago.
I mean, just as we're looking at ways to help our revenue here and there, I know certain committees have, you know, taken a close look at their fees to see whether that makes sense still, given the cost of things, cost of doing business in general.
And we've got great volunteers, the scouts. They've done an awesome job of spring cleanup. And the high school students for their, help me out here, their civic duty-ish thing?
Community service.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah. And the church, the new church in town, they asked if they could participate and celebrate Southampton by going into the cemetery and using this expensive liquid, four of them, cleaning the stones. And they went at it like pros. I got photos of them, and you never knew it was their first time. So, oh, and painting. We had big paint parties for years. Pam Gaspor headed that up. So there seems to be a good stash of volunteer labor, and we just want to, you know, keep the interest going and keep everybody happy.
Anybody else have any other questions? Welcome. Hi, Joey, welcome.
Hi, thanks.
Just, we, I think we should at least bring up the issue of the fence. What's sort of happening with that? Are we, are you?
Well, we're waiting for the purchase order to be placed for the water piping, because the fence is tricky in a sense that we can't go out for bid for quotations for monies that we don't have, I understand, Mass Law or whatever, to pay for the fence. And we need a price in order to go to CPA or grant funding. So I need to, after the water piping's taken care of, sit down with the town administrator, and how can we get vendors to come in and give us an estimated price that we then use to go to CPA to go for other funding, and word it so that we don't get into trouble.
Yeah. So this would be probably an RFP, right?
No, it's called hiring one of those vendors as a consultant, and it precludes them from bidding on it. But they basically develop the specs and the estimated cost.
I know at one point you were trying to find even anybody that was an iron worker, right, that could even possibly replicate that?
That article in the fence drew several people. In fact, I went to Newport to photograph a fence along the breakers near the wall that one of the companies constructed. And we were very pleased with the results. People were busy. A lot of work wasn't done in a pandemic, and now everybody's sort of waking up and saying, hey, take care of my iron structure. And so they don't need to work. Some of them don't even answer the phone calls. But that article did work very well for us. Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Anybody else? Questions? What's holding up the purchase order? Because we had to go back to town meeting a second time to get more money for this water, and we don't, I don't think we want to do that again.
No, we don't want to do it again. Town Hall has not placed the order last year nor this year. And unless it's placed, the vendor could raise the prices.
What's happening with that?
I've actually reached out and said we're looking to move forward, and I'm waiting for a date.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay.
It would be unfortunate if we have to go back to town meeting and ask for more money because the prices go up for the third time.
Not planning to do that.
That'd be unfair.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Cheers.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Robert.
Okay, next. Board of Health.
Hi.
You snuck in. I didn't see you.
Caitlin Brooks, 189 College Highway, Chair of the Board of Health. Sorry, I'm going to wear my mask. I've been a little under the weather this week. So we're here to talk about the budget and maybe give a brief overview of this past year, which has been challenging in terms of staffing for, for the Board of Health. We have not been able to identify health agents to fill the 10-hour a week position. They've done numerous steps to try to identify appropriate candidates by speaking to peers, other local communities, posting on social media, getting news articles posted in a local public health article. Unfortunately, there are several other local communities, including the Foot Health District, which also have open health agent positions. So we're kind of not really able to hire somebody to that position. Still looking for a candidate in case anybody's interested. Been in touch with the Share Public Health Excellence Program, and they said that they're made the inspection services maybe in the next fiscal year, but they would have to train people in order to be able to provide those inspection services. Certainly keeping our fingers crossed. I think either way, they said that these would not be, would not cover all of our inspection services, but they would be supplemental to help out with inspection services. Initially, they said to cover vacations and things like that. We were kind of hoping for more than that, because obviously, even just a few hours a year wouldn't be enough. Additionally, we received some of our funding through ARPA, and we use ARPA funding to cover $30,000 in inspection fees for this current year, which is why we're asking for those funds to continue into next year, if we don't have another option. We, in response to John's request, have looked at increasing our fees further. Like, we have compared to many local communities and feel that our fees are where they should be. And I'm interested to see at the end of the fiscal year where our revenue comes in, because we've increased our fees so much, especially for septic installation. So there's actually two versions of the budget, and I'm actually not sure which one you've been providing a copy of.
Well, we'll hopefully get it up here in a minute.
Because the budget that we submitted looks a little bit different than the one that we received back. I'd like to talk through that for a couple minutes and maybe verify our asks a little bit. While he's doing that, just wanted to acknowledge, so of course, public hasn't gone away. We do, we did learn that a new regulation is being rolled out for housing and minimal standards for living, for especially apartment buildings, that Jerry's going to be going to trainings for. But East Hampton actually lost one of their employees who's going to be training other people on these new regulations. They're pretty extensive, and the changes are expected to impact the number of code violations that we might see through Southampton. Been very busy in the department. Charlie has been doing all of our inspections, kind of five, curb tests, plan reviews. Real estate is still very busy. Hopefully, that will settle down soon. And the mobile food truck season has actually already picked off. We actually asked if it would be possible to?
Oh, oh, no.
I'm sorry if you couldn't hear me well. We asked if it would be possible to regionalize food inspections, food truck inspections, to see if it would be possible, instead of a food truck who goes to all of our local communities, to have to get inspected in every single local community. And we learned that that was outside of the scope of the Shared Public Health Excellence Program, and they said that that wasn't really in the proposed regulations to regionalize inspection services, although we are collecting fees for each town. So say, if a food truck goes to each individual town, they're paying that fee for each town.
And how much is that? Do you know?
I don't have the fee schedule in front of me.
That's fine, that's fine.
Any luck with the budget? No. Okay.
App isn't working. I'll try going through.
I hate it when that happens.
Do we have a copy of it here? It's not available for everybody else? Is that it?
Okay. So what I would like to do is, because I'm anticipating that you are looking at the revised budget, which looks a little bit different than the one that we submitted for a couple of reasons. So maybe we could start with?
I don't know if it helps, but the two budgets we have, one is 119,000 and change, and the other one's 149,000 and change.
I don't have that.
No, no.
I have 107.
What version I have?
Okay.
107,000.
107,000 and 149,000.
I'll wait to get the number.
Okay, so we'll just talk about, so what we had submitted initially?
Can we just, okay, is that what you have, what we just said?
No. What we submitted initially was $62,926.38 for health director wages, which?
In year one.
In, in your first budget.
In the, in the first budget that was submitted, which reflects the three hours that were funded through ARPA.
Can I just stop one second?
Yeah.
Why is it that every time, like, we've been looking at all these department budgets, wasn't the, wasn't the instructions, column one is only contractual increases, column two is the wish list?
It is, yes.
Why is it that every single department is coming up with their own plans for column one?
Uh, I think there's only been one or two others that have had the same issue here, so I don't, I don't, because every, every other department, I think...
Yeah, most of the departments have followed what the instructions were.
Let's get through the presentation here and see, so, column one, you had the 62,926, we now have it in column two.
So, what we said is that we, if we are not funded with the additional three hours, which would bring the health, um, the health director to 35 hours, we would submit the three hours through an ARPA request for the 47, 49, 68 for the health director position. Um, and I guess that's been adjusted for the second wage line, the second thing that is not included in that wage line, which I did request additional information that would kind of help us to better inform our budget process, was the 7500 that was, um, awarded as a settlement through, um, the last year's town, or the most recent town meeting, um, and I see that that's not reflected in the request for fiscal year budget line one, um, but we did, you know, request that just because we thought it was fair for Jerry to be paid fairly inequitably, um, and so, we have the ARPA request written separately in case those hours were not going to be funded, we do believe that the, um, health director position does require 35 hours to support the needs of the town, especially in the absence of a regular health agent, um, given all the, you know, the factors in public health and, and the needs for her time to be full-time, 32 hours just isn't sufficient. We left, um, the health agent wage line in place, of course, we're hoping to be able to hire a health agent, so there's 1,2391.88 in the health agent wage line, um, which...
1,000.
Sorry, 12,391.88, which we did, we're not currently utilizing, um, and the reason we wanted to leave that in place is if we were to hire somebody and we didn't have any funding in that wage line, then we wouldn't be able to transfer it in the absence of a town meeting. Um, the board of health expenses, so we had written the contracted inspection services in a separate wage line, um, just because the 30,000 that we're requesting is for specifically contracted inspection services, which hopefully we would recoup those costs through, um, inspection fees, but I see that it's been moved into the board of health expense line, um, I don't, to us, it's less, less important of where it is, but rather that we receive funding for inspection services, and then our other wage li, um, our other lines, the Sharps program and the mosquito program have remained the same, and then the animal inspector salary, which Nicole is still doing, remain level funded with a hope that we could increase our salary and our wish list to 3,500 from 3,183.62.
But that's not in the second budget, it's the same as the first one in my list.
Right. Um, we had submitted 3,183.62, and our wish list was 3,500.
It's the same, it's the same on both lines.
That's the budget that we had, that's the wish list that we had submitted.
That is my error.
Okay, okay. Okay, so this...
So the 30,000 should be on the second column, we're doing it the way, and you had also mentioned about inspection fees and, and that you don't really have a revolving fund at the moment, right?
So we talked about having a revolving fund, and we didn't really know how it would make a difference in the revenue that we're receiving, and we, we talked about this in one of our meetings and said, you know, as long as we're taking in the funds, that having a revolving fund doesn't really change the circumstances, we also wondered, um, just like ticketing, going into a, a general fund instead of, like, police tickets, going into a police fund instead of a general fund, if it would have, uh, impact, like, public perspective on, like, how we're charging inspection fees.
But you just mentioned about the inspection as almost making it sound like it was revenue, and right now, it's not the way it works, because you don't have a revolving fund. I thought you just said something about getting, getting inspection fees.
So we do receive inspection fees that go into the general town fund.
Right, 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 but it doesn't directly come back to the board of health expenses.
Correct.
And that would have to be approved by town meeting.
And we decided that we didn't want to pursue that, just because we didn't think it really made a, in the bigger pool of money, that it didn't really make a difference.
So, can I just expand on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Joey.
And, and if you want to get back into it, that's fine, but from an outsider's point of view, if you're charging X amount, just pick a number, 300 to do a Title V inspection, that 300 should cover that inspection, so they make the check out, it gets deposited in the revolving account, and then if you're paying the subcontractor 250, you're writing a check out of that revolving account, so it's always going, so it's, it's budget neutral, it doesn't impact the citizens, only the people requiring that service are actually paying for it, so I, I would say it should be separate, and if the contractor that you have in place, this is not the, the case, but for example, if the contractor was charging a thousand dollars, then you gotta charge 1,100 for it, I mean, that's what drives the price versus, we're gonna collect 300 because that's comparable with other communities, which it probably is, but yet, the contractor we have in place is charging us double, because they really don't want to do it, so having the revolving account makes it crystal clear that it's not a burden to the taxpayers, it's the individuals that are, that are requiring the service or paying for the cost at that point in time.
Certainly, and that's something we could talk about maybe at the next town meeting, we could certainly bring that to our next, uh, put this on the, for our next meeting.
And then, did you have more?
Were you done presenting? I mean, yeah.
I'll let you continue.
I'm confused up here, to, to me, it looks like the 30,000 is being counted twice. Your expiring budget is 77,000 and change, plus you got the ARPA money, and you can't really see it because it's in column P.
Scroll over, yeah.
Right, so 70, 77,000, and then we go to your first ask, is 107, so is that 30,000...
Should be three.
Being added in?
Right.
Something other than the inspected contract services?
So, no, we have 3,000 of board of health expenses, and when we submitted the budget, we wrote the contracted inspection services as its own line, but it looks like they were lumped together, um, it's, you can see it below, um...
So, so Bradley, on the, on the second ask budget, that should be 3,000 as well.
33.
It should be 33.
33,000.
Well, then you don't want the 30 down at the bottom.
Let's let Bradley answer, please.
I was including the 30,000 in that board of health expense line, so it would flow into the totals, so when we looked at the totals, how much we're budgeting for, because we don't have a line currently for that contracted inspected services, so it wouldn't flow into the totals sheet.
Right now, that money is coming out of the ARPA fund, it's not out of the current budget.
Right.
Right, so the 30,000 down below, right above the 119, is not part of the formula.
Right, and if you deduct the 30,000 from budget one, you will come up with the same total level funded as in 23.
But it's not uncommon for consulting services to come out of expense line, correct?
No, it's not.
I'm fine with these, I mean...
And what, what happens with these spreadsheets, and Brad, Bradley actually showed it to me, they added a, they inserted a line on this and sent it back, well, however, when you do that, it doesn't flow to the total, so the, what we did was combine those two lines, so it would flow into that total sheet.
Otherwise, your total budget is gonna not tie in, yeah.
Right.
You can't manipulate the line.
So the wish list has that 30,000 twice.
Well, it's not...
Only on the list, it's the bottom...
Only on the list, right.
...of the formula.
Right, but it's not like we're asking for that, 33,000 in expenses and then 30,000 in inspection fees.
Right, and, and your logic on breaking that out was so it could only be spent on contractor services, not something else, which is why you wanted to give it its own line item.
Yeah, so we're not buying extra toner, we made a toner joke that we would do lots of printing.
It's not good for the environment. Okay, questions? Yeah, go ahead, Renee.
Um, I haven't been, uh, I've been very clear that I don't think a town of Southampton of 6,200 people needs a full-time health director, I've said that repeatedly, um, and now you're without a health agent, I know that our health director has compared herself to the building inspector office, um, often, which runs with a health inspector and the good graces of a volunteer, and so I'm wondering whether the board of health has considered asking the health director to consider, it's only 10 hours a week of health agent, of becoming certified in soils and being able to do inspections.
I'm sorry, asking who to do inspections?
Have the director, uh, get certified to do soil inspections, because you're currently paying a consultant to do, uh, plan reviews, which in the past, the board of health has done, and then he's signing off on them, so you're kind of paying twice for these, uh, plan reviews, and so I'm just wondering whether or not, is any, um, thought to having the health director get additional certification and pick up some of the responsibilities of the health agent, because I, because personally, I don't think we need a full-time health agent in the town of this size, and no town that have 6,200 people has a health, full-time health director, and you're actually trying to increase the hours.
I recognize that, and I also just want to acknowledge that it's a one-person department at this point, if we wanted to look and bring in a volunteer, we have discussed that, um, I just, you know, we've received the feedback that there's sensitive information in that office, it's really hard for, it doesn't reduce the work burden on the person who's the health director, if there's somebody answering the phones, because the paperwork remains the same, the filing remains the same, um, so just to have somebody take the calls doesn't actually reduce the amount of work that's coming through the office.
Just, with no due respect, disrespect, I just want to say that it's always an exception office, and you constantly say it's a one-person operation, well, actually, there's three employees in the budget, um, and the building inspector has one employee, the town clerk has two employees, the accountant has two employees, the town administrator has two employees, so I just don't find that this department is always the exception to the rule, the, you know, there's so many departments this year that's had staffing problems, from the accountant office, to the treasurer office, to the board of assessor office, to the school department, so I just feel like, uh, it just, I, I don't support going up in the hours of this particular position, and I would consider having some additional responsibilities on the director.
Okay, okay, other points, questions? Donna, anything, okay? John? So just to be clear, on the, the, um, the current budget here on, on the health director is level funded at the 50,000, right?
Of course, it gets a little bit more tricky, because we did request ARPA funds to support our budget, so our definition of level funding, you know, because we have been so reliant on those funds, is a little bit tricky, but yeah, we did try, and the other, the other thing that changed when we submitted our budget, the 2023 amended budget included the wages from the settlement, and that was not reflected in the revised document that, um, we received today.
Yeah, let's, let's just clarify that, Ed, could I have you address that, please?
Yes, please, thank you.
Those, in our knowledge, that is not, we're not viewing it the same way as wages.
It's a one-time settlement, has nothing to do with salary increase, wage increase, an hourly rate increase, so it has nothing to do with a contractual increase.
Got it.
So that's that, so, and on the, back on the 30 for a minute, so that's right now the inspection services, which, remind me, we've done 30,000 for ARPA, and that was for how long a time period, was that?
The year, for the, for this year.
Okay, so what you're asking for is another 30 for, for this year?
For this coming year.
And you have put in an ARPA request also, so you've, you've covered your bases, you've done it here and there, so we, we did the first ARPA request.
We did the ARPA request for this past year, I don't remember if we submitted a second ARPA request for this upcoming year, for inspection...
You've got a second one, and we've had it on hold, because we were waiting until we got through the budget to see what, what was gonna be needed, so, yeah.
Can I, can I just ask, was there any consideration given to maybe, um, designating 50, 15,000, 50, 50% of the 30,000 for the consultant inspector, and maybe adding that other 15,000 to the salary of the health agent, in the hopes that with more money, we could attract someone, and that they might also be able to do at least 50% of the inspections, and that way, we, we would start to get more bodies, you know, a staffing level that, that you feel better accommodates the office and the responsibilities.
I think we could certainly explore that, I mean, we left money in that wage item line.
Not costing any more money, it's just moving it.
Mm-hmm, so get friends in, repeat what you're saying, so, would you mind just repeat that again?
So, I, I said, using, instead of asking, um, putting 30,000 in for the consultant inspector, put in 15, put the other 15 in the health agent wages, with the expectation that that person would do at least half of those inspections, and then start to build up the capacity and the capability of the office to, you know, and that person would, would have the right of, I'm gonna say right of first refusal, I don't mean it quite like that, when, when, you know, a request comes in for an inspection, if they're able to do it, they do it, and that would save money on the backend with the consultant, unless and until, you know, the work gets, there's an overflow, he would have to call in.
I would love to do that, the challenge is, we have reached out to as many people as we know locally to...
And at higher salary.
You could try, I, we could try more hours, that there's just not the people who have the certifications to be able to do the, do the inspections.
So is it, in this, we're talking primarily soil certification, or is...
Soil, title, yeah, Title V inspections, perk tests.
Okay, and do we, I'm, just out of curiosity, I mean, suppose there was an interested body out there somewhere, I don't know where, because I know they're hard to find, but is there a, I guess what I'm trying to, like, a training cost, for example, to go and get trained, do we know what that would cost?
Um, the problem is that there's a year to two-year wait to be able, even able to participate in the training to do soil inspection, and the requirements to become a Title V inspector is like a registered sanitary area, a septic installer, uh, there's like three other people that are eligible, and what I learned is because of conflict of interest, I've reached out to the state to try to figure out if there would be any way to recruit somebody who does septic installations and pumping in town, and like, there's, there's issues with conflict of interest of working in a town that you're all self-inspecting in, which decreases your possible even applicant pool, people who'd be qualified to do those inspections to like almost nothing. We had somebody reach out to us, um, that said that they would be willing to do the inspections, but they wouldn't be willing to lose their customers in town. I mean, we talked to friends of friends, we talked to people, I mean, we've explored a lot of different options. Am I pushing that, or am I sorry?
Yeah, well, next question.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've literally been posting on social media, talking to friends of friends, talking to, to people who do building in town, who know people, in Westfield, Northampton, East Hampton, I mean, this is all being done like on my personal time.
Okay, um, just, yeah, go ahead, John, sorry.
On the animal inspector salary, going from the 31 to the 3,500, do you think that's, is that reasonable?
Yeah, absolutely, to keep it competitive, yeah.
And that's enough?
I think that's a fair start, Nicole is very good to us, she does a lot, she maintains our barn book, she, um, I, I think it's a small ask, because from year to year, that, that wage line has not increased.
Does that, does that represent a number of hours, or how does, how is that calculated?
Uh, so it depends, the workload depends on the number of people who have to quarantine animals, whenever there's a dog bite, somebody needs to have an inspection, I mean, or like, maintaining the barn book is just an annual thing that Nicole does and keeps up with.
That is a stipend.
It's like, she just does what she needs to do.
It's not hourly, hourly rate, 10 hours.
Question was, what was the figure based on?
Because the fee, I mean, it's been pretty, since 2022, it hasn't been increased, so we thought it was fair to...
I just thought I read somewhere about gas, but I'm just, so, I'm just wondering, how did you come up with, from 3,183 to 3,500, what was, what was the rationale for the increase? I mean, not the rationale, but what, how did you come up with that figure as opposed to another figure?
3,500?
Yeah.
It's just a stipend for, I mean, we, we just thought it was a fair increase, it was a percentage increase.
So, and mileage is not part of that, so running around to all these farms around town, and everybody's chickens in their backyard, and their, you know, number of goats somewhere else?
Nicole does not submit mileage, but it would come out of our expense line.
Yeah, the, the mileage comes out of the expense line, yeah.
There we go, thank you, all right, got it, okay.
I just also want to acknowledge that, um, the number of people that are available to also fill the health director position are extremely limited, we have multiple surrounding communities that have actually lost key players, like Bree leaving East Hampton was a huge deficit for them, and I also just want to think, like, there is really no contingency plan, like, there is no next step, and I also see that we're going to have just as much trouble recruiting for a health director position, and I think it's really important to think about what our next step is going to be, whether it's decreasing the, the health director hours, um, we don't really see it's, that it's feasible to join in with the Foothills District, we looked into that, it just didn't seem like it would work out, um, I do... We looked into that. It just didn't seem like it would work out. I do, I do just want to think about next steps, and just say that there's generally a huge deficit in, in public health experts in our area. And I do think that part of what you're seeing in this wage line does pay for experiential knowledge, efficiency, being able to, you know, handle all the inspections in town for a growing town. We're always building. There's always going to be additional septic systems that are being installed. And, you know, I, I do believe that there's not going to be a big shift in public health, grow, you know, resources that are coming to our town. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if any of you saw my post about all of the open director, health director positions in our local community, but that's just because there aren't enough people. So I, you know, I just want to say I don't, we don't know what the next step would be beyond when our current health director is working here.
Yeah, I mean, succession planning is a challenge, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any department, any town, for sure. And, you know, and other, not, not around here, but other places where I've seen something happen, and not necessarily a health position, but you would take the person who's maybe thinking of leaving, and you would say, okay, well, we're going to keep you on at three-quarter time, or something, and we're going to take a quarter of what we would have been paying you, or something like that, and bring in a junior to be kind of trained on, on the spot by you, so that you're sort of, kind of preparing your, you know, your replacement, in a sense. I don't know. It, it can work, or it might not work, depending on the, on the situation. But there are, you know, some, I've seen people do some creative things with it that sometimes works out the right.
I'll also acknowledge that anybody with a master's in public health is going to be really hard to pull them in at a wage of 50 to 60,000 in today's market.
And that's a requirement of the job?
That's what's in the job description, but is that what's required by the state?
Those are the type of people that would be attracted to doing a health director-type job.
Is that, is that the requirement by the state for?
It's not a requirement by the state, but you think about who your candidates are going to be, and generally, it's people who have an interest in public health.
I think our town would be better served by the regional health director, who can give advice and keep up on regulations, and have worker bee agents doing inspections, and an admin assistant that would shared with building inspector or someone, because we're not going to be able to rely on arts good graces forever.
And I agree that, right, in the future, we could plan for something like that, but I, I believe that given our current employment structure, that making those changes at this time would not be feasible.
Okay.
No, that's something to look toward.
Right. But I mean, I'm thinking about right here and right now, in the budget that's in front of me, and we have to plan for this current year. And of course, we're thinking about how we might be able to do things differently in the future.
Yep. Okay. Joy, anything?
No.
Anybody? Any other questions? Anybody? Donna?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying all this, too. That helps. I'm sure we're all on the same page here. Okay. Great. All right, next. Conservation Commission.
Good evening. My name is Art Lawrence. I live at 113 Crooked Ledge Road. I'm the treasurer of the Conservation Commission. You can see ours is relatively simple, and we have, we'd like to thank the Select Board for supporting us for quite a number of years. We've upped the amounts a bit. It's hard to say what we will use these funds for, because it's always a changing environment. For some of you, and this was about 10 years ago news to me, that the number one priority for a Conservation Commission is preserving open space. The second priority is wetland protection. So a lot of what we talk about here, or ask for here, goes to that particular situation. I, I looked at, we've, we've used up all the money this year. I, just to give you a flavor of what we, we do use it for, one thing is the MACC, which is the Mass Association of Conservation Commission. We, we are members of that, so we take our dues out of that. We removed the Manhan Meadows Suspension Bridge, which was a big, major hazard down there, and, and we really couldn't do it until we got the permits, the NOI to do that, but we were able to do that. A Dell laptop for our new conservation agent, subsidized by a person by the name of Art Lawrence. We did, had, we had to add some bog bridges to our Manhan Meadows grant. The grant then was a shortfall in the grants, and, and unfortunately, it was specked by our consultant totally wrong. So we had to dig out some money for that, and then for signs, again, for the Manhan Meadows. We're pretty excited about what we've done as far as the conservation land. If any of you get a chance to go down to Manhan Meadows, our, our new trail system is, is, I think, fantastic. Right now, I'm working on the pedestrian footbridge, a 75 by four-foot bridge across the Manhan, that will connect the two sections of Manhan Meadows with the, with the Holland Conservation Area, and we expect to get that done this summer. So again, these funds will help. I'm also being inundated by my very good friend Cindy Palmer. We, we, I don't know how many times and how many, how many late meals I've had lately, my wife screaming, "Come up here, it's time to eat," about a potential 1,000 acres, and, which is really, some really exciting stuff. So who knows where that's going to end, but we are opening up, and, and right now, I believe, we're pretty close to, getting close to 700 acres under conservation management. The second piece that, that we have up here, oh, did I do that?
I didn't.
Oh, good. The second piece is the conservation agent, and he has brought a whole new flavor. I mean, it's, you know, it's so nice to have somebody who's qualified, who is a wetland scientist, who can, can go out and take charge of a lot of these things that, you know, poor Marla, I don't think anybody works harder in this town than Marla or Hank, what she's had to do, and, and basically kind of unfair, because, but on the other hand, Marla likes to do that. So it's, 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 but it's working out quite well. One thing I should mention that this, this young man has helped us with already is the Land Use Committee, or group. And they just met last week on the Parson Village property, which was the highway superintendent, the building inspector, the health director, and this conservation agent. I'm surprised they didn't include, which we always did in the old days, the fire chief and the police chief, but hopefully next time they will. But that's another area that he can help us with, and so we're asking for basically four additional hours. Right now, these are, his funding is, I believe it comes out of ARPA, and that's going to run out. But, you know, we see a lot of work coming down the pike for, for, for this man, a young man, and I'd like to say his name, but I can't, I can't say his last name. I'm still trying to figure out.
That's Aniro.
Well, it's Nicholas, okay. For an old guy, it's a tough one. So that's pretty much it. And I'm welcome any, any questions you might have.
Yeah.
Hi, Donna.
Hi.
Yeah. Just, just one clarification. As you were talking about, the conservation agent, so just out of the ARPA, just so we're all on the same page, we funded 19,500 for '23, and 19,500 for '24, and that was estimated at about 14 hours a week.
Correct.
That's where we are.
Yes.
So you're looking up that 19,500 a little bit to get a few extra hours?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that number?
19,500.
19,500.
For each of the two years, so.
19,400, you said, right?
No, 19,500 and 19,500. So we, we had approved a total of 39,000, so 19,500 for fiscal, fiscal '23, and then 19,500 for fiscal '24. And, yeah, and that was based on an estimated 14 hours a week.
I was gonna say, there's a story behind that.
Nobody really knew, yes. Life intervenes, that's why. Did you have a question, Joy?
No, no.
Totally lost your train of thought, I'm sure.
Chris, the, when we did that, did we do that as two separate line items, or is it the same request just spread over to two years?
Uh, it was, it was one of the first things we did. It was one, one request spread over two years.
Right. And what's the reference number?
I'm sorry?
The reference number?
It is, uh, hang on.
Or the request, the RF, the PO?
PO 25.
I'm going to make a motion to, to increase PO 25 by 5,405 for fiscal year '24, to fully, to honor that request, but fully fund it through ARPA funds through next year, as was our intent.
I'll second that.
What, what do you mean, was our, as was our intent?
When we, when we agreed to the 19,500, 19,500, we agreed to fund it for the first two years out of ARPA, and then in year three, we'd have to find the money.
Right.
If he's justifying increasing the second year by four hours, so I'm saying, for the first two years, which now we're in year two, they want to up the hours, that 100% of that should be coming out of ARPA, and in year three, we figure out how to.
How to get it in the budget.
Replace that funding 100% on the town side.
So you're, you're proposing to add the 5,400 to the, to the ARPA of the 19,500 for fiscal '24? So increase that one to, by 5,400?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion about that? Well, I'm just concerned procedurally, that it's not really on the agenda to review the ARPA applications. I mean, I support it, but I'm just wondering if we have a couple of other ARPA applications that are pending the, the date that we usually review ARPA applications. So I'm just questioning it from a procedural standpoint. And this is not, this is a new request then, right? This is the, the request from CONCOM to go up additional four hours.
Yes.
Correct. So that's, yeah, that is a new request. Yeah, I mean, we would normally take up the ARPA at the end of the month again, which we will be doing.
So if they complete an application.
But, but procedurally, a motion has been made and seconded, and we're not, we're not barred from acting upon it in open session.
Think about what, what our next step is, because we're, we're meeting again, our next full meeting on ARPA wouldn't be until like the 25th or something. So, okay, Joy, question?
For discussion purposes, I would think of, you know, considering your request, but asking that, before a decision is made, you know, if we're going to consider additional funding through ARPA for this, that when they complete an application and we take it under consideration, when we get, when we do the other applications?
Okay.
That's not, it's not an answer in or an answer out, it's just finding an alternative.
My only thought is that we would then move the ARPA meeting requests up a bit, because if we didn't take these up until the last meeting on the 25th, we should have our budget long done.
Okay.
Yeah, but I got a feeling we're going to use a lot of the ARPA money for the budget.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
I hope not.
So, I mean.
My question was, is there any ARPA applications, remind me, because I'm, it's not off the top, that are from the town currently? Any outstanding ARPA applications that are from the town?
We've got still the financial software. We've still got the, we've got the request in for the Board of Health Inspector. Okay. Or business in town, but that's not. I think, and one of the business in town.
But we've already out, we've already reserved what we believe would be enough money for the financial software.
Right. We've reserved some funds for that, for two of them at least. And, yeah.
Was a balance, if I remember, somewhere in the 80, 85,000 range, if those others were funded?
And we had recently voted to increase the potential funding for the feasibility study of the public safety complex. Right. Yeah. Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Shall we take a vote on that? All those in favor of making a decision now, just to get through this motion here, to making a decision now to take this requested increase for the CONCOM agent out of the ARPA funds rather than out of the main budget for FY '24? That's what I'm understanding, the motion to be? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. I, I just feel like the application should be filled out first, and then we could address it. But I support it. I just feel like we have, we have a procedure and would follow it. We had problems with CARES Act. I just feel like we should follow our own procedure. Okay. Yeah. Joy, I didn't hear you say.
I'm going to say I, and I would expect an application to come forth with, but I feel like we've already kind of made the commitment towards the Conservation Commission, Commission to fund this position, so, through ARPA funds.
Right. And I would say probably just take that paragraph right there, and submit it as an amendment to Purchase Order 25 for fiscal year '24.
Yeah.
Then you have the piece of paper on the file.
Right. Okay. All right. So I think I heard, was that a, a yes?
Yes, I was going to.
So I believe I heard four and one abstention. Okay. All right. All right. So.
So do, do we need to, so a lot of application?
We need to have something, just another amendment to the application.
We'll get that to you right away.
And what she said was just this paragraph?
Yeah.
An amendment.
Amendment to the, to the application, so it's still.
Using this paragraph?
Yeah. Just, you could just put in the paragraph that's in the budget narrative.
About the conservation agent increase.
Do you have this? Do you have this paper?
Art?
Yeah, I wrote it.
Yeah? Okay, all right.
I hope I did, yeah.
Art, just see me on Monday, I'll help you with it. I'll take care of it.
Okay, perfect.
It would just be an amendment to the current purchase order.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
Or project.
No problem. So Bradley, I would probably zero that request out as well. Thanks.
All right. All right. Anything else in there that we have? What was the, the 1,000, which is extra, for expenses? Increase in expenses, I believe?
Yes, we.
Super signage and whatever else?
Yeah.
Shouldn't that just be on the second call?
You know, cost of goods, everything has gone up. You guys know that as well as I do, and so.
Yeah.
But we can.
Someone mentioned that. It was like, well, we're not really that many, but every one I'm seeing, it looks like that. So I'm going to go back to the budget for a minute. So in that one, the, what was last year's? Was it 5,000?
5,000, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you're correct. So it stays, that was the level, the request was, the instructions were level-funded for column one, and then your wish list is where you would have your.
Okay, sorry.
Your change. Okay. All right. Any further questions? Donna, anything? Anybody? John, Francine?
No, good.
I just hope everybody can support this agent when the time comes. You know, ARPA's going to run out of money. It's been a great opportunity to help the school and a lot of other departments in town. I just hope that there's support for all of this going forward.
I just, I certainly agree. Just an aside here, I, I don't know if you all had received Paul Demon's request. And again, most of this, you know, I'm an old beaten-down engineer, so a lot of this is just communication. And it's amazing what gets done in, in the planning, doesn't come over to the conservation side, and vice versa. I mean, I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody. It's just the way we, we work. We sort of put our old little silos together here. Having somebody that can work through all this and just communicate, and, and get everybody on the same page really makes sense. And this whole land use thing was even something else, extremely important. I know we did that, you know, back when Heather was here. We, we did a lot of that. That was, that meet, those folks met quite a bit, and I think it helped a great deal. We were putting O'Reilly in and all these places, so. And that seems to be continuing today, so.
One last one, Art.
Yeah.
Are you going to be doing any updates on some of the conservation area brochures? The, a couple that hadn't been done, like Clearwater hasn't been done, right?
Right. And, and, and we have done those, and I have, you know, we just have to get the person to do it. We, we finally now have somebody that's great at the mapping and all that, so that was a big piece, that Pioneer Valley Planning used to do for us. And then we need some write-ups. But yeah, that's a good, very good point. We, we know that's on the list.
Right, good.
And we're opening up new sites. I mean, we're going with Alice Brown now. That's, that's starting. We need to get something together for, for that, and certainly Clearwater.
Is that one open now? Is that?
It, it is. We should be having a sign-up within a couple of weeks. There is one, certainly one trail, and we want to develop more up there, but it's a beautiful site. If you've ever been up there, it just shows off the, the mountains and so on and so forth, so.
Uh-huh. Okay, good. I know a couple of years ago, they, maybe last year, the year before, you had actually, and the town had voted to have a revolving fund.
Yes.
Specifically for the, what do you call it?
Logging?
The forest plan, foresty plan. Has that been working out?
Yes, it's quite a bit. And we've, we've used those funds extensively.
Good. It's generating some income, too?
Yeah.
Great.
But, you know, we've got to be careful on that. There's a lot of controversy these days about, you know, I, I can go, I can give you. There's a lot of controversy these days about, you know, I can go, I can give you song and dance about it, but, you know, we don't, if you go down to Manhattan, you can see a good example of no management because we've got trees everywhere and this and that. Now, a lot of environmentalists love that, and that's, I guess, is great. I like it more managed, and that's what we've done with all our properties. First thing we've done is gone and surveyed all our properties, or, you know, as we go through them. So everything that we've gone through is now surveyed, their blaze, their medallions on them, and then we generally go on in, because none of these places have been forested, we go through, and the typical way was every 10 years, you're supposed to manage the forest. I hate reading the Gazette because it seems like every day there's another article, oh, we want to keep it pure and pristine. Well, take a look at Manhattan, you'll see what happens, so.
And just a final note, for anybody who's listening that doesn't know, new to town, the maps for those that do exist, and the overall conservation area, just showing where the conservation areas are in town, are both in hard copy here at Town Hall, but also they're online on the current website under the Concom page. So anybody who's looking for a map to go hiking, you can get, at least, I think maybe four or five of them are up there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and I believe we have some at the kiosks down at Manhattan Meadows.
Okay, good. Thanks, Art. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, last but not least, Park Commission. We'll still get you on by 8 o'clock.
Dylan Maudsley, 22 Caitlin Way, Parks Commissioner. I didn't actually submit this budget, so I'm curious to see what it says myself.
Let's see what you have to say.
So I think that the appropriate there would have been $2,000, I guess, as I understand from what I'm hearing tonight under Request Budget One.
Unless it's contractual.
There is no, we don't hire anybody and we don't have any contractual fees, so that should remain the $2,000. So basically, we're looking for a little bit more money here. I think we'd realistically say $2,500 for the year-over-year change requested. We can leave it at 3,000, it's fine, too.
That's what came into us, anyway.
Yeah, so we can leave it there. Realistically, we're looking at this point for this upcoming year to increase the amount of more or less maintenance, year-over-year maintenance that we're trying to do at the parks, specifically around the quality of the fields. Labrie and Conan, looking at potentially aerating, overseeding, bringing in volunteers to really help do that process, potentially fertilization of the fields, get some of the weeds out, get the grass going better, especially at Labrie. The current budget of the $2,000 doesn't even cover any of our expenses at that point, or minimal amount of it. The trash alone, I believe, is over six, almost $7,000 a year from the trash pickup from the DPW for the transfer station fees. That is being transferred out on a yearly basis. On top of that, electricity costs go up, water costs have gone up. So that, I would like to be able to get at least this side, the expenses covering the stuff that we're paying for. We paid for paint for the Boy Scouts of America, came in, did a great job painting the bathrooms at Conan Park. There are some cracks in the floor that Randall will be fixing, but again, I'm not sure who's going to be purchasing those materials, whether it's going to be DPW or Parks. We were able to purchase new signs using CPA money. If you've seen those, Randall did a great job installing those at all the entrances to the parks. And I think additional signage around town, around the parks would be nice as well. I know we're also looking at improving in the next year or two, the playground at Conan. This operating fee would not be used to pay for that. However, there are trees that need to be trimmed, so that there's better sightlines between the pavilion and the playground, and just overall cleanups of the parks, kind of using the town budget to more or less maintain and beautify and not necessarily make any capital improvements. So that's the reason that we're, that we're asking for the increase here.
Dylan, can you walk through your revenue? Like, for example, I know there's usually at least once, one meeting a month where we're signing off on permits and right-to-use and alcohol and all that.
The Conan Park Pavilion ones?
Yeah, I'm assuming that that money's flowing into your park. Well, you get it, how do you divide it up amongst your three revenue buckets?
Great question. I'm still learning.
No, okay.
I don't know. My understanding is that's, so that's the process I'm learning this year. We've, our two most experienced members unfortunately are not running for reelection, which is why I'm here tonight, is I'm still learning this process, trying to understand where it's going. My understanding is that the main revenue sources are the Conan Park Pavilion rentals, alcohol use, alcohol permits, and then use fees from the sports organizations in town and out of town. We did make adjustments to those this year. We've increased the usage fees across the board as well as a Conan Park Pavilion rental fee. We believe we're trying to stay competitive with that. Unfortunately, Conan Park's Pavilion is not comparable to the pavilions and the amenities that surrounding towns have. So in order to be able to remain getting it and keeping it booked, we've, we've kept it under what, for example, Nanotuck Park or Stanley Park are charging, but have increased it from where it was before. It'll be interesting to see, and this is the first time, I believe, those fees have been increased in several years, so it'll be interesting to see this year what impact, if any, those have had on that. We did increase the single-day use pretty substantially. I think it's from $50 to $100 for the ball fields, and that, that is primarily coming from out-of-town organizations, so we felt comfortable with that increase. We are trying to be cognizant of increases to the user fees for SYAA and only increasing that slightly because ultimately that ends up just coming out of the residents of the community, and we don't want to additionally pass that money through, basically. So that is, that's where that's coming from. Yes, I'm sorry.
I see on the, on the revenue report, the year-to-date for '23 is 2,175 in revenue, but I don't have a number for 2022, although I see Brad.
Bradley just putting it up there.
Moving some things around so we could get a sense.
He just had to get in.
So it was.
6,000.
In 2022, 6,250, am I reading it right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And I believe the vast majority of that is sports field user fees.
Yeah, where did that come from, Bradley? Where'd you take it from?
Well, see, here's part of the issue.
Was it the pavilion?
Yeah, here's part of, your three revenue lines are Conan Park Pavilion.
Right.
Then Conan Park itself, and then your Park Commission usage fees. So Labrie's nowhere on here. So from an outsider looking at this, last year you collected $6,000 just from the pavilion, in theory. But yet, can't find 200 bucks to turn on that water fountain.
We actually got.
Is all the money being diverted over to Labrie Field, coming out of Conan Park? You don't have to answer it.
I want to clarify two things. One of them, there's the two Conan Park fees. The smaller Conan Park is the trust, I believe, that we can only use the growth on that, that we can't touch the principal. As far as the remaining money going into Conan Park, that's, that could be correct. And I think that's absolutely something the Park Commission needs to address in the upcoming year, is sorting what money, revenue sources are coming in, what buckets they're putting in, and whether or not we have the appropriate account set up and where the money is coming out of. I agree that we should not be doing, that it should be transparent of where the money coming in is coming in from, and where the money going out is going out to.
Yeah. Because we have, on the revolving fund, we have Conan Park at 2,175 for this year.
Right, and that's a revolving fund, so it would not show up as revenues in here. And that's the only revolving fund.
That's the only revolving fund, okay.
So what is the revenue that you, able to be used for operating expenses, then?
That should be the other revenues that they're charging, like the athletic associations and getting money for that.
And that's what the 6,000 is?
That's what it should be.
Why does it say 6,000 and then 2,175? Why is it all over the place?
I think, if you go back to their budget, they have another revenue line item that isn't showing up on Bradley's report.
Yeah.
Which means one of two things. Year-to-date, they haven't turned in any receipts. It's called the Park Commission usage.
So, okay, so that's four, and then it goes down to one? Can you slide over to the right?
Yeah.
And then there's none? How come?
We have it in the revenue report? We just didn't put it in, maybe?
By its number, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I wanted to mention about the user fee. You know, we, we've noticed as a select board since we sign off on it, that a lot of the user fees are actually people from out of town. And we also commented at one point that there doesn't seem to be a difference between whether you rent the pavilion for four hours than if you rent the pavilion for eight hours. So I don't know if that's something worth looking into, but it does seem like it's, it's worth, it's amazing. My daughter was going to rent the pavilion, and it was much more expensive to rent Nanotuck than Conan. Much more.
Much more, I agree. So I think we have increased it, and that is, that is something we have discussed, whether we want to break down into half-day and full-day. You know, and I don't want to say anything negative about our facilities, but I think the tough part is, is that that pavilion is not up to the same standards as some of the newer pavilions, especially some of the surrounding parks. So I think it's, it's, if we get near those numbers, we are going to be, people aren't going to want to. And I agree, there's a lot of people from out of town. So maybe, you know, the alcohol usage license, that's something we should be looking at, too. I agree. Thank you for that.
So then, just looking back at this, then, so the, the park usage fee for '21 or '22 never got, got booked in? Is that?
Well.
Or is it mixed in with other funds?
Only because of its number, it's 25, which indicates it's a revolving account. But you can see, it should be somewhere after Concom Forestry, right, in the sequence, but it's not there.
Yeah.
Which, I would think it, it didn't pull because it's probably zeros. Right, so I wonder if they're just, what comes in gets spent out, and at the end of the year, there's no money left, which is why we're seeing zeros at year-end.
But it still should be there.
Yeah, we should note that it's there, though, just for the in and outs of it, right? Because that, that Concom fee, that, so that's the revolving fund, rather, that's, is this the interest? No, this is what, 31, can't see that, 3124? What does that represent?
It says revenue.
No, I'm sorry, that's Concom. Never mind, sorry.
There's nothing up there for Park.
Just the pavilion, I'm sorry. Yeah, so that was actual revenue for '22 for 6,000, 25 for the pavilion. Okay, got it, got it, okay.
Was that on the spreadsheet?
6,025?
Now it is.
Yeah, Bradley added it.
He just added it.
And I honestly don't know if that was purely Conan Park Pavilion rentals or if all deposits from all usages were just deposited into that revolving account, and I.
Possibly as time goes on and Labrie Field was added, it just became a deposit account, so the approach might be to change the name.
I agree completely. I mean, right, and the tough part is, you know, we look at the SYAA fees, which is by far the largest income revenue. It's, baseball doesn't use just Conan Park, they don't use just Labrie Field, same thing with soccer. And we're actually getting to the point now where we're running out of field space, so that's going to be another thing that we're going to have to look at, is how to use these things.
I don't want to put you in the spot, because I know you're nice enough to come here and talk about this, master plan and tennis courts. Are they both on their way? They're both funded by ARPA?
My understanding is the tennis court's gone out for bid, that's been approved, and that should be happening. I don't know what the dates, but I believe that's happening. That's in the works.
I believe it's made.
Yeah, so, but it's, it's all scheduled, it's all ready to go, it's going to happen. The master plan, we've gotten, that went out to bid based upon the scope of work that we put out. The one bid we received back vastly exceeded the.
The second one is just about the same.
Okay, so we may need to go back and revise that scope of work or come back for additional requests on ARPA. The two numbers do not line up. We had a, I had a kind of casual conversation with one of the, during a related event, about what that general thought would entail. That's where the number that we came up with came from, but we did not have a detailed conversation of scope of work in that, at that time. So I think at this point, we either need to revise our scope of work, to narrow it, to reduce the cost, or use our current scope of work, come back and ask for additional ARPA funds for that.
Okay, well, I'll warn you ahead of time, ARPA funds are getting low.
Understood.
Truly there.
Option A may be, option A may be the better choice there.
We've been spending, I think we put in, I believe it was 8,000.
Yeah.
From ARPA. Pretty sure it was, for the master plan.
Yes, that's correct. And I think that was based on the idea of it being, I think, I guess, probably my fault for not fully understanding all the engineering terminology, but that was a desktop review is how that was said, and that we would basically look at it and take a look at what was needed. I thought, that's what I put in the scope of work to put forward to them. That may not, in fact, be what I put forward to them. So I'm learning, I'm trying to do, trying to learn my way through it, and I think, you know, we'll go back once I review what, that other proposal and see how we want to either amend our scope of work request or what we need for official funding.
And that was just, just for Conan Park? It wasn't Labrie?
Correct, that was just Conan Park.
And I can always go back and just ask the question straight out, what did you have in mind for a scope of work when you told us, and I'll say us, it was we, when you said between 5 and 7,500, so.
Okay, thanks, Ed. I appreciate that.
Are any of the expenses reimbursable by CPA? Anything on, any budget that?
No, I think the specific budget request would be for, would truly be for ongoing expenses, that I think any capital improvement should be carved out, either go to CPA.
Signs and things like that?
Any signage that I would be saying this would be, we're talking stuff like bathroom signs, where we, for example, we changed it from a men's room to a gender-neutral bathroom. Stuff, when I say signage, I mean things like that. Not major capital changes, no.
Can I just ask one other question? Could you just repeat what you said about trash? Because I was kind of like.
My understanding, and this is what, from the last meetings I've been to, is that the highway department, because it's a transfer station enterprise fund, and ultimately they're the ones who are responsible for removing the trash, they charge us a tipage fee, basically, for the trash that they pick up. Truck comes, DPW goes through, empties all the cans, and then we get billed at the end of the year for the, for the trash fees.
Conan and Labrie.
Correct. Quarter, is it, I don't, do you know the current, I don't have that number, I was looking for the quarterly.
We're all different. You know, we pay one here at Town Hall, but it basically depends on.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Which, if you have a four-hour party or an eight-hour party, would justify an additional expense on an eight-hour party.
Yeah.
To cover up the two bags, you know?
Right.
Versus the one bag.
And there is no breakout for recyclables, right? Like for cans and bottles?
No, and that's something we should probably explore as well, is whether it makes sense No, and that's something we should probably explore as well, is whether it makes sense to put in trash cans that have a single-stream recycling bin next to the trash or not.
Ideas?
No, we can't do a single stream, because we don't belong to a single stream.
Strike that. We should put out maybe several trash cans to accept different forms of recycling.
Different colors, whatever. That makes sense. Okay. Anybody have any questions on Park Commission?
No, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Dylan, for coming.
Thank you.
Your first effort, quite handy here, good.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you much, all right. Okay.
She's married, she's gonna get home before eight.
Yeah, she definitely will. All right, so, I think that was all that we had on the docket for budget issues for tonight. Do we want to go back up to look at the overall estimated revenues while we still have Donna here, and then we can talk about what our next steps are on the budget? Because I think this is, there's nobody else that I would envision us having come in to talk about their budget, everybody's had a chance, that seemed to have some, especially changes in their budget requests from last year, to come in and talk to us. So, estimated revenues, where are we at on what you guys are talking about now? Has anything changed since we saw it last time?
Where did vocational numbers come in?
The final have not come in yet.
Really? I thought it was April 1.
That's when the applications are due, we gotta report after that.
Oh, jeez.
I will say this, as I did take the opportunity to look at the preliminary listing, there are seven more, shall we say, applications than our seniors graduating. Now, they're not all gonna go, however, that would kind of lean me to thinking that it's gonna be closer to a level-funded year, rather than that reduced amount that's currently in there.
Ed, do you mean that there are seven juniors rising to be a senior, asking to go to voc, is that what you're saying?
There are 17 seniors currently, which will graduate, oh no, excuse me, there are 12 seniors that are graduating, there are 17 applications to go into ninth grade.
Gotcha. So in theory, a plus five, but they won't necessarily all take it.
Right, exactly.
So our numbers are too low?
That's my intuition, correct.
And we'll know for sure by when, do you know?
I'm gonna send out another email and ask Denise to send me the list as soon as they got it.
Okay. There must be some date what we can plan by.
I know, we need to get it in, if it is. That's gonna make a big, big difference.
Right. So the bottom line right now, we are, how far apart? 600,000?
Does this include FIRE?
No, that's the revenue. 600,000 more.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, yeah. Revenue versus what the requests are, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing. So, request budget one...
70,000?
Okay, why is, why is it, why is 24 request one less than amended 23? Is that real?
We're short like $63,000?
What's changed that we...
Probably the biggest difference in there is that roughly $200,000 for the charter of vocational tuition.
Oh.
Yeah, but that hasn't changed, has it? Did you change it?
That's at the amount that was originally estimated, that was very low, that I called the select board's attention to. Yeah.
So, just one thing on the revenue here, if I put on my select board hat here, I think the town administrator should probably reach out to the regional central office, if he hasn't already seen the certification of efficiency and deficiencies account, because I believe it's well over a million dollars that got certified, which is far in excess of 5%.
Aren't they establishing the stabilization funds?
But they, anything above 5% has to come back proportionately.
I wonder if they're seeing that as...
Well, they're in...
Back.
They're, I'm sure they're gonna ask how they, how we should do it, but statutorily, unless we agree to it, it has to come back to us, and I think if we knew what that number was coming back, potentially keep it, and we offset our proportionate, you know, I don't know what the mechanism to use it, but the last meeting I was at, the certification, which I went to, I haven't found mine, it should be in my inbox, it's north of a million dollars.
Yeah, they actually went back and asked to have it recertified.
It was denied.
Oh, was it? Okay.
And there is no appeal.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
So, now if I put my school committee hat on, you just leave them alone, but, you know, with the select board, you guys might want to dig into that, and, you know, because that could be, it's gonna be another revenue source, or an offset.
Yeah, but do they have the ability to establish three funds, stabilization funds, and consider that to be getting back to the town?
Yes, to your first question, they can establish it, no, they can't use above and beyond 5%.
Okay, so that doesn't qualify as an overflow?
Now, they could come down and pitch it to us, and we could vote to agree to it, but they can't do it automatically, right, without, without all five select boards approving it.
They could do it with less than, you know, with the excess money that they have.
Correct, up to the 5%, they can do what they want.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah. Donna, do you have something?
I just wondered where are we with free cash? I looked on the ELS's website, and it said that something, free cash hasn't been certified yet, and as we looked at the budget, if there were one-time things, or something that we could use some free cash, or add it, then it might be helpful.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, we're in the process of wrapping that up now, we had some discrepancies of deficits with the school that Bradley's been working with Denise on, and just about ironed those out, so.
Yeah, that was very helpful last year.
It's not certified before town meeting.
We can't use it.
We understand.
So, is it likely not to be resolved before the town meeting?
No, it should be, we want to finalize all our numbers for next week, and have submitted them, so it should be available for the town meeting.
Okay. All right. Remember, last year, I think, Donna, you were involved in this also, is, we did end up taking a couple of the, we were down to like the final payment, are we, is there anything that you can think of that can be shifted over to free cash, or to other funds that would help the operation budget at all?
Well, look, you know, I'll look at some of the traditional ones we have in the past, such as what the cost for our MS4 permit is going to be this year, and then some other items.
And we haven't really identified, I think, going through here, well, I guess, you've already got the capital request, so there's nothing more that we might, even though capital hasn't met yet, but...
Well, and then the other thing is how much is in capital, normally, because we have our free cash policy, we put so much into different accounts, those haven't been funded, so it's gonna limit what's available to...
Right.
Right, so, I, the excess deficiencies, the amount that has to be returned is 617,000 dollars.
In total?
In total, so...
And then 55% of that is ours?
300,000 is ours?
It's about 300 grand.
About 300,000, maybe back to Southampton, okay.
Which would solve that issue right there.
That would help a lot. Yep, that would be a big help.
That's great.
All right, well, let's keep track of that. So what's gonna be our next step here? We have our next, you're gonna finalize the free cash thing, we're gonna be meeting on Tuesday as a regular select board meeting, will we be going through more of this, on more detail and figuring out?
My suggestion would be to go through the large sheet, rather than the individuals, and, and, well, I'm hoping that we will have, been trying to get the final numbers out of our insurance accounts, I know what's estimated will cover them, I'm just hoping it's less, hoping to have the final numbers for next Tuesday for the vocational students that have applied, and there's also two debt numbers for new borrowings that currently waiting for, that we should have, and then just go through it and prioritize it.
Could I just ask Bradley, if you would calculate the difference between the revenue and the expense for the second request?
All right. And what was the answer to, where does FIRE stand in this?
I can't read the...
522.
522 for 19...
Okay.
Yeah. I think we were still looking at the idea of doing a standalone...
Correct, I mean, yeah, the theory would be that their tab one is the basic here, and then we would look at the difference between the tab one and the tab two for the FIRE EMS accounts for an override.
Right. And then, last thing is, we have not built in any, either a step increase or a COLA into any of this yet, right?
Bradley's not even saying anything, why don't you just hold on to something?
I was just gonna say that.
I'm gonna make him, he did the calculations, so.
Okay. So, yeah, where are we with any of that? That's not, is that in the spreadsheet?
It's still level-funded from previous year for all departments, department head stuff. I did make a rough estimate of if we used a 2% COLA for everyone's payroll, or last year's model of steps for each grade, of all the grades of all the employees, and I believe that the 2% COLA would be less of an impact than using the model, because the model, everyone goes up. Again, I think, last year, we had the surprise of the library with all the substitutes and all the employees, they've been working so many years, that they really got big increases.
That was kind of an outlier, right?
We could try the model again, and cut off the library, and keep it reasonable, I suppose, but I think the 2% model is cheaper.
Oh, it is, but go ahead, tell us the two figures, please.
Again, I'm not confident in these numbers, but the numbers I had for the 2% COLA was 16,911,46 cents additional from last year's budget, versus the new model would be a 27,635 dollar impact.
Okay, all right.
Well, I would just, I would just add, I think we should go off the new model. That's, that's what we put in place, that's what we said we would go by until we got the next, or the salary adjustments and reviews, and so now to revert back to just the 2% and basically throw all that work out, while I agree with you, it's $9,000 less, but, you know, if we do that, then, once again, the non-collective bargaining staff members take second seat, because, or actually, I'd say they're in the trunk of the car, because we're only bringing this up now at the tail end, when we see what we have to play with, and that's not really good for morale or fair, either.
I agree.
I agree with John.
Yep. Ed?
And I'm just gonna throw in a two cents worth is, okay, the 2% COLA is fairly standard, what the town is trying to done, have done over the years, I will remind the select board that the actual inflation rate for this past year was 7%, so, yes, I would say it makes more sense if you want the employees to keep up with the times, to try to use the model.
Right. And again, I agree with you, Ed, and, but I just reiterate, a year ago, sitting here, this is what we told the employees we would do, and, you know, now, if at the end of the day, it just becomes impossible to fill that gap between the 2% and the step, so be it, but we should at least make an honest attempt to do it first.
Yeah, I agree.
The other question I have, though, is that the negotiations for the teacher salaries have not been finalized, so that number hasn't hit this budget either.
Well, there is a placeholder in there, and the school committee knows that the ship has sailed to make an adjustment.
Okay.
Well, you know, the committee will have to live within what's already there.
Okay. Okay, all right. Donna? It would be helpful, I think, oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
I just wondered, so the difference that we're looking at right now, between budget one, and the revenue, estimated revenues is 67, does that include the debt service that's now, does that have a placeholder amount in it at all, or not?
No, it doesn't.
So, we're really...
Oh, boy. More than that, even worse.
More than that, it's over 100,000.
Yeah, easily, right. Yeah, okay. It would be helpful, I think, for me to definitely have you check with the school, that could be a huge help, but also to actually see, when we actually look at all of the budget as a whole, to actually have a column where we add those steps. Is that doable?
Probably my best, but...
Well, even if right there, Bradley, if you did like line 252, you know, if you put in the two...
Do it as a composite, yeah.
Right. So that when we're looking at the final pages, we can just kind of see it, versus having you go back and hit every single budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, that's fine. But you had gone through and tried to calculate it on everybody's...
I used last year's model as a basis, and looked at everyone's rate for fiscal year '23, I did the 2% for everyone's rate up, then I looked at the model, there's a lot of missing people and open positions, so it's hard to set a rate for someone, is, are we using the person that just left's rate, or are we using the step one on the model?
Yeah.
But usually, when we're advertising the job, we're using the same rate that we just paid that employee, so...
So I would hold those, like, if something's open right now, it's whatever the current rate is, don't move them up a step, because there are, there are significant, there's the COA director.
Well, that's, that hopefully will get...
But it's on that pay scale, right, so I mean...
Yes, right.
And then...
PA.
Yeah.
Yep, and the, who else is on there? Well, highway, but that's contractual.
Right.
Contractual. Right. Huh? Water commissioner is contractual.
Solid contractual. Okay, so anyway, for Tuesday, though, I mean, to the extent we can get something in there, so that we're really working with as solid numbers as we can, because we're gonna have to sharpen our pencils here and figure out what we're doing.
Right, right. I just want to picture that increase over some of the other things in line two, or column two.
Right. And then I think, you know, we will plan on, you know, hitting this budget again on, so Tuesday, the 11th, along with a couple of other agenda items, obviously, that are coming on, but we will plan on a separate, again, budget meeting for the 13th, really just trying to, you know, cut and, cut and add, and negotiate, and figure out where we can, where we can put things in that make sense, okay? So let's plan on that. All right, any other questions on the budget? Yeah, Francine?
No, I don't have a question, Lucy's raised it.
Come on up, quickly.
As long as it's non-controversial?
Yeah, I'll ask you a question. I'll let you ask the question.
I just want to make sure, the warrant has to be, I'll just make a comment, the warrant has to be ready for the 25th.
We know.
I know, I know, you know, I just want to make sure, I know, all right.
We know, that's why we're reading twice a week, Lucy.
I know, you guys are working hard, I know. Well, it's gotta be posted on the 25th, so, yeah.
So, so it has to be posted by the 24th, though?
A week before, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Okay, so that's, that's where we are with budget meeting, so, Donna, thanks for coming, and you're welcome to stay or go, but we, this is the end of our budget part, so it's up to you. She has a question.
I've been looking at the agenda, and I saw the bylaws, I don't want articles, and I wonder if we've had a discussion on finance, so we have PCFs for positions that are just being replaced, so somebody leaves, somebody new is being hired, it's not a new position, it's already something that's budgeted, PQB signs off on it, Bradley signs off on it, and finance has to sign off on it, there's two right now that, you know, that there's not a quorum to sign, we don't really feel that finance needs to sign those, but it's in the bylaw.
Uh-huh, in the current finance bylaw? The bylaw for the finance committee, is that what you're saying?
Or in the handbook, in the manual?
Or in the handbook for...
I think it's in the handbook.
Oh, the PQB handbook, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I think that maybe we should consider removing the finance from, if it's a, which is a new position, like the conservation agent, then, yes, I think finance should weigh in on that, but when you're just talking about, you know, somebody got left, and you need to fill a vacancy, and the money is budgeted, and Bradley signs off that there's money in the budget to pay this many hours at this rate, I don't think finance has to sign, and I don't want it pulling up the process.
Sure, yeah, understood. No, that's, that's a good point, and I think we had a couple of other ideas for changes that we needed to make, or wanted to make in the PQB handbook, we started a little bit of it, but I think we had...
I can make a motion to name you to PQB, if you'd like.
No, we had done the, the former accountant, the assistant accountant, right? So we had, we had started a little bit on a couple things, but we, you know, we had not really taken it on as a, as a task to do, but it, that would fit in timely to get that worked out, yeah. Francine?
Or in the absence of a quorum for the finance committee, what the personnel, the PQB did, was they designated someone, gave someone the authority to sign on behalf of the committee, you know, in those interim times, would that work?
If they can get three of them together for a meeting?
No, for one time, to make that, yeah, you're saying to get three people together for one time, I know.
Only three are there right now, yeah, it's a challenge, yeah. Okay, no, that's a good suggestion, we'll keep that in mind as we...
Although we could appoint...
Go forward, yep.
There's two members in the audience we could appoint to the committee.
Yeah, there we go, we're drafting. Okay, all right, let's keep on moving, guys, we've got a few more things to do. So let's move on to, just, this is kind of a list, without much detail yet, in terms of the warrant articles, Ed, do you wanna, we can all read what's here, so we don't need to go through them, but are we expecting others that you haven't received yet? I mean, are we, this is looking like our usual kind of list, but is there anything else coming that we don't know about? Today was the day.
It's pretty much the usual list, I mean, establishment of an opioid stabilization account would be something new, we always have CPC articles, the bylaws, for both, the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws are, there are some changes, but there's also a recodification, which takes a town meeting vote, I know that the police chief reached out to me, and thinks he's gonna need to transfer some funds from wages to overtime again, so that would be an additional one.
So line item transfers?
Correct. And then, you know, we have a number of departments who are running out of money in their energy accounts, so those transfers, since it's May 2nd, may make sense to add to the list also.
Okay. Today was the deadline for warrants to be submitted to you, warrant articles to be submitted, and so we're shutting it down, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, yep.
Doesn't, I mean, if we have this stuff, we can put it out, but transfers between lines, can't that happen in the month of May and June, with finance committee approval? If you have a committee?
It can happen in May and June, you've got a town meeting that's gonna be May 2nd, do you want to get them over and done with, or do you want to wait for a quorum of finance? Well, no, I'd rather get them over and done, but to Chris's point where, you know, today's it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah. But I'm, well, I'm assuming if Ed has to work on these, we know that that's there, okay? I mean, that's not like an outside commissioner coming into us saying, oops, I forgot to send you my warrant article. So, as far as we're concerned, we've got kind of the list here, okay? Alright, anything else there? If not, alright.
Can I just ask, it says CPC, three articles, playground equipment, greenway design, what's the third?
I can't hear you, John, I'm sorry.
The CPC articles, three articles, playground equipment, greenway design, and what's the third one?
Is that a grant match?
Yeah. Should remember this, but I've gone brain dead. But yes, it's a grant match for greenway design, that's 65,000.
That's on there.
It's already there.
There's playground equipment, greenway design, and then the third one is missing.
I'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
Is it just their distribution of funds?
No.
No, that's just a normal article.
Normal article, yeah. Okay, alright, we'll check on that one. Whatever number three is.
Yeah, that actually comes out under what's called the Community Preservation Committee Report.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so there, we'll just check on what that one was. But if we can, I think, too, to the extent that we've got, you know, the requests, so that we've got, we can see a little bit of language with them and not just, you know, just the names of what these articles are, so we can understand them a little better, that's good. Alright, next issue, item. Community Forum Facilitation Discussion.
I actually have it right here. Magic for Matty Playground at Labree Field, Manhan Meadows Sanctuary Trail Greenway Project.
Oh, Manhan, that's what I figured.
Oh, Manhan Meadows.
It was a, it was a... It was a good other grant match.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Manhan Meadows?
That's what I thought.
Okay, fine. Good to know. But that's a grant match, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, fine. So, we had talked about trying to do basically whatever we want to name it. Community call, Community Forum, Community Meeting of sorts. And we were looking to especially take the incident of the fire on High Street and use that as a jumping off point to really take a look at what it means for this community and living in a rural area, but especially those areas in town that are beyond what I would call the hydrant zone. And what does it mean in terms of all sorts of things, from fire to other services, be they highway, be they water, be they whatever else is out there that we need to consider. And so what we were talking about doing is having a community meeting, inviting those heads of department to be there to talk about the issues from their perspective in terms of the challenges of, well, those kinds of things, of maintaining roads, or what do we do when we don't have hydrants out there? And what do we expect of homeowners? So, I would envision having the planning board folks and anybody from zoning to talk about zoning and those kinds of issues as well. So, a pretty comprehensive meeting with some of those key town officials and residents. And we thought that the idea would be to take a look at some of the issues and then come up with some ideas of what are things that we need to be working on to plan for the future to try and avoid this kind of a situation in the past, in the future, yeah. How can we plan for the future to avoid this kind of situation? Knowing that, you know, you can always plan and never, never say that it won't happen again, but we can be better prepared perhaps than we are. And I think there's lots of things that we need to all learn about, how the town operates, what services we have, what limitations we have. People can see that we're having challenges already with the budget. So, this is an opportunity, I think, to do that. And the board asked me, or allowed me to reach out to people that might be, people from outside town, that would be what we would call a community facilitator. And we have a resume of a person from Wendell, Massachusetts. And this was circulated to you all, I don't know if it's in your packet tonight, but it went around by email. And the person's name is Debbie Linengale, I believe, that's how you pronounce it?
Linengale, yes.
I think it's Linengale.
Yeah.
Who's been a mediator, facilitator, lots of training background, and seems to be quite, quite the right type of person to facilitate a community conversation for us. And so, we have a proposal that came in, which you should have seen on your emails. And so I don't know if anybody had any thoughts about that. The person has given us a couple of options to consider, and I'd like us to take a look at those options. And, well, first of all, do we agree that this person would be a person that we would like to engage to do this kind of thing? And if so, then take a look at the proposal a little bit more in detail. But she had given us a couple of options to consider and given us a timeframe in terms of her availability, which is going to be, if I can find it, sorry, anywhere between April 14th and 19th, I believe it was. Yeah, okay. Any evening events, April 14th to 19th, she's available if we could, if we wanted to decide on engaging her or not, and let her know. So, does anybody want to talk about this a little bit more and flesh it out? Reenie, go ahead.
I think in an ideal world, having this meeting facilitated would be a good idea. It's a lot of departments, and I think there's still a lot of emotion in the community about the fire and all the factors that went into it. So I think in an ideal world, I think that would be a good thing. I'm just concerned about the price, that's all. I think she's qualified. I'm not saying that her price is anything that's unusual for what she does. I'm just wondering whether we should pay that money for this particular situation.
Okay, yeah, anybody else? So, I can, I can just mention, so there was a basics approach, which would allow for a couple of hour in-person meeting facilitation and an hour or so of sort of preparation, developing materials, and then follow-up debriefing of the session. And she was estimating around a seven-hour timeframe for that and a fee of around $875. Or a, let's see, a basic plus an additional meeting design prep. And this added more design on her shoulders rather than on us doing that. And the scope would be up to about five hours of working together with us on a meeting design and developing, you know, the process of how this would be carried out. And again, the meeting itself and follow-up evaluation or recommendations after that. And that was approximately 11 hours' time for $1,275. And so what she has told us in here is that we would choose one or the other. You don't do one and then follow up on the other. So, one or the other, whichever one we thought would be reasonable if we did. Just so we have the figures out there for anybody to understand. So...
And where would we pay this from? What account?
That's what we have to figure out. We don't have, obviously, this was no, nothing planned, right? We have no, no money set aside for this kind of thing. The reserve fund that I would have normally suggested we use it for, we've already used for the fire department area roof, I believe, it's, I think it's all gone, is it all gone?
Yeah, I thought there was very little left.
550 or 600 bucks left.
There might be $600 left, so maybe there's a little bit there we could pull from the reserve fund. But I'm not sure where else we could find the balance. I mean, personally, I think it's, I hear you, Reenie, that, you know, it's, you know, ideal world and whether we can afford this. I kind of, in my own mind, I kind of feel like we can't afford not to do this. I don't feel like there's anybody internally that we could, I think we need to have the meeting. And I don't know that anybody internally is going to be perceived as objective and as able to manage a crowd of people, which we don't know where we'd have it, that would be another discussion. But I like the idea of having somebody from the outside, and obviously, that person is not going to be free. So, I think it's, I think it's, it's an investment we have to make. I mean, I think, in my own mind, you know, we've, we've gone through an unfortunate time here, and certainly the family has. And the emotions still are raw in many cases, but I think we have to take that as a learning experience and figure out, okay, what are we going to do to really understand and make other people in town more aware of what our limitations are and what our services are? I mean, I think the people that came to that meeting, the first meeting about it, in open time, talked about, well, we thought the town had our back. So, people have perceptions of what services we provide, and I think this is a chance to lay out what the realities are from highway, from water, from fire, from whomever. So, that would be my argument, that I think it's money well worth spent personally. And I don't know this person, I'll put a disclaimer on it, I've never met this person. We talked on the phone just to sort of give her the lowdown so that she could put a proposal together for us.
One thing that I think would be really important regardless of whether we engage this person or not is that we have to have all the departments there. Like, it's not an option for the water department not to show up.
This would be mandatory.
We can't not have planning, you know, if we decide that it has to be these departments and it has to be at night that we have a representative who's aware of all the procedures and who can speak to it. Because, like you said, it is, it is the right thing to do to actually broaden it out, to look at where is there water in town, where are there dirt roads? You know, it's just, these things are going to come up.
Yep, so...
Now, I agree, it's money well spent. And putting together the money might be something, you know, we can do between now and our next meeting to decide which option is available to us, although I think we're going to be limited to the less expensive one. But I think people, really, it's an investment in the future of people. And I don't know how many people live outside of the hydrant zone, but I probably would think it's, I don't know, maybe 50% of the town residents. So, I think it's an important issue for a lot of people in town. And it's a consideration and an eye-opener for everyone in terms of planning, looking ahead.
Yep. John, any thoughts?
No, I mean, I get that we should have it, you know, I don't know. Whatever we do is not going to be, there's going to be one side that's against it, one side that's for it. I think opening up a forum to a room is going to be very dangerous and treacherous because I'm assuming this, you know, who's going to, are select board going to sit up there and be targets?
No, we're going to be part of the audience, that's why we're having a facilitator.
Yeah, so, I just see it spiraling out of control. I'd almost rather spend the money on an independent person issuing a report, a written report that we could then act on versus, and maybe doing that written report and then presenting it in a community setting versus, I just, I'm leery of an open-ended Q and A.
Well, I think, I think it comes down to the design of how that, how this would be. So, I would not see, for example, you know, we'd have to structure it with certain questions, right? And so, you'd want to hear from Randall about, okay, what are the challenges of maintaining the dirt roads in town? And, you know, he's going to give his, he's not going to do a presentation, you know, we're not going to have, I mean, my vision, okay, no, I'm just, I'm just throwing out my vision, sorry. I wouldn't say that the town heads of department would be there to present anything, but they would, you know, we'd structure some questions and they would be able to chime in. And so, okay, from a highway perspective, these are the kind of things we're facing. From the water commissioner, this is, this is the reality of what we're doing. From planning board, oh, we don't have that zoning something, whatever that may be. Okay, so you'd have everybody chiming in on that. And then, together, I would hope with a good facilitation, then you would take it to the next step, which would be, okay, so we've got some of these ideas or problems identified, or issues identified, or realities identified. Is there, what are some things that we might be able to start doing? You know, is there a zoning change to be done? Is there something to be said about, I don't know, new construction? Or what do we do for existing homeowners? And get, again, those perspectives. So, it's not, I'm, I'm not wanting this to be a confrontation, town against the heads of departments at all. I'm trying to make it a community conversation, is my, my hope, but maybe I'm...
But in putting together that, in putting together that report that you're suggesting, that individual's going to have to talk to people, not just department heads, but people in the community to get what their perspective is on that situation. I mean, so it's all going to, it's all going to get out there, one way or another.
It's true. And just, just a note, on the, on the difference in the price from the, whatever that was, 800, 1,200?
Yeah.
The extra $400 puts the work on this person to do the prep work, not on us to do the prep work. That's the big difference, from what I understand.
Nothing, I'm, I'm supportive of hiring this person as, me personally, as a mediator and going through the many trainings that you have to go through to become a mediator. I know that the forum is not just like question-answer kind of unhinged conversation. There's always, there's ground rules that we would come up with, agendas, how much time each person has to talk, or how much each agenda item is going to be, especially since this is going to be two hours, we're limiting it to that. It's pretty easy to kind of plan it out. But I think it would be helpful, especially if we're just members of the audience, to have someone from outside the town who has experience not only in meeting, mediating difficult conversations, but also handling different personalities and backgrounds.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have anything more to say. Yeah, Robert, would you like to, sure.
Robert Floyd, College Highway. Just some observations. She's a, he or she is a professional. They're giving their soonest dates, and we're reacting to that.
Sorry, they're giving their what state, I'm sorry?
They're giving, that person's giving their soonest dates that they're available.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I believe some people, department heads won't be available, and that's short of a notice. So, my recommendation would be to let that time zone go by and pick a date, ensure that everybody else on this side of the fence will be able to be there. I think where it's going to be is important. You're going to fill the room, they're going to be, they have to be, so you really need to find when the school's available.
And I was, we're going to have that on the agenda for, if we were to accept this. We had this, a placeholder on the agenda for Tuesday to talk about possible logistics and location and so forth.
And as far as the rates, I think, I think they're fair. 20 years ago, I changed my rates as a photographer, and it was $200 an hour, four-hour minimum. And I was being hired. So, this person's a professional, and you don't want to go cheap.
Yeah.
And I think whoever used the phraseology, but you have no choice, you have to do it.
Yeah, right. So, I guess, yeah, no, that's, it's a valid point. And I guess we would have to reach out to the key people that we feel that must be there. So, obviously, the fire chief, highway, water, I'm thinking, planning.
Police.
Police. Who am I missing?
Planning, highway, water.
Planning, yeah.
I mean, I guess I'm tying zoning in with planning, but...
Zoning, yeah, you would have zoning there.
Building, yeah.
A building, yeah, building inspector. And then, see if we can get an idea if we, if we have this, this date range that we know that she's currently available. See if we could pin some of those folks down. Not some, everybody would need to be there, I really do believe, everybody had, would have to be there in those, within that timeframe. And if we had a majority of people there, if she felt that she could get it prepared in time, that was a little bit more my concern, was, you know, is this enough prep time for her?
No rush.
Yeah, and at the same time, you know, I mean, do we want to just get through town meeting and then come back to this? I mean, I don't know.
That's my other point.
Yeah.
You're too much on your plate. You get town meeting, get that out of the way. Election will take care of itself, you know, town clerk will take care of it. But you need to get the town meeting under your belt, over with before you start engaging, I believe, all the department heads.
Now, the timing is really difficult.
Timing is challenging.
You've got to do it right.
Yeah.
Okay, cheers.
No, thank you for that input.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Right. Did I hear somebody else? No? Okay. What would, so what would anybody like to do? Do we think that we would like to hire this person, but we need to come back to it on Tuesday if we can figure out where we could find money for this? Or do we want to scrap the idea? What do we, what do we want to do?
I think we can come back and talk about it. Do you still have your department head meetings after select board meetings?
Yes.
I think if, it would be helpful to maybe talk to the police, fire, building, that's it, right?
Yeah, I would want to know if they're supportive of getting facilitated.
If they're supportive of this event, since they would be the ones that have to speak about what the issues are.
Yeah, sure, there's going to be one next Thursday, so I'll just bring it up.
Okay. But I mean, we need to, you know, if we're going to do this, we need to give her an answer so she can be working on it. So, I mean, by Tuesday, really, we need to decide.
Yeah.
Unless we, if we, if we didn't stick to this date, and honestly, actually, Tuesday's already the 11th, so as Robert says, there's no way that, I don't think anybody could get it together.
I would get, I would get another block of dates from her.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then share those with the departments.
So that when you have your meeting...
Then go from there.
Okay.
Do you know what's happening as far as the write-ups on that night? You had asked that people that were involved in that night write what happened.
I got some of the ones I wanted back and then some I haven't.
Okay.
And buy another block of dates, like, after town meeting.
Okay, after town meeting.
That would make sense, right?
But definitely not into June.
Yeah, if we can do it in May.
This can't drag out. I mean, I think, and again, John, I think I see this as kind of a first, a first conversation, you know, and, you know, it may need some follow-up, you know, because then if it's like, okay, well, we think, you know, there's going to be, I don't know, two or three things that are the magical low-hanging fruit that we could actually try to tackle. I mean, it may be some of the folks that came that night said, you know, we'd, we'd want to work with you, would you want to help, help work it out together? So, you know, whether there had to be, heaven forbid, yet another ad hoc committee, but I mean, there might be a little working group that could form out of this that could help, you know, sort of shepherd something through into, you know, whatever research had to be done or putting it forward before the next select board or something like that. So, I don't know. Just trying to, trying to make a positive situation out of the whole.
So, if I was a resident and I was coming to this event, I would be very interested in seeing a map of the town and where this public water and where the hydrant... in seeing a map of the town and where this public water and where the hydrants are and where there isn't. I'd want to have a map of where there are dirt roads. And so I think that them, I'm imagining those maps exist, but I also think that it would be important to give department heads time to prepare whatever they would not want to do.
Yep, no, that's valid. Because I think, yeah, no, I think those would be, you know, logical questions for anybody to ask. I agree with you on that. Yep.
I also wouldn't want the, the discussion to be, we don't have the money, we don't have the money, we don't have the money. Like, I think that good facilitation will hopefully make it a, you know, creative process.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we're, we sound like we're kind of more or less interested, but, well, we want to get into second block of dates before we make a final, final stab at anything in terms of actual voting on anything. Okay, I will reach out. And if, in the meantime, Ed, you can see where we might possibly find any money. If there's something left in that reserve fund, that might be a place to start, but.
What's left in the reserve fund?
There may not be, huh? Yeah.
Five hundred dollars or something.
What are we going to end up doing with the cannabis fund? It's not, it doesn't, it basically sits there and carries over, it doesn't get added as free cash, and there's a proposal right now to give money to the Board of Health or to pay towards some education. But is that how that fund works? Is that your understanding?
I think so, yeah. And we've got, still, we don't have anything back from the Board of Health. We asked them to give us some ideas for people to be formed on a committee specifically for this, and to develop a draft charge for the cannabis part. We're not talking the bigger opioid.
Right.
And so we don't have that yet that I'm aware of, do we?
No.
Okay.
But they're in the, they have been in the process of identifying. And while they were individuals who were expert, who would participate on the committee, in addition to that, they were looking for other resources or other collaborations with surrounding towns, because the big dilemma in looking at this is Southampton has money, and yet, and, and I think one of the primary audiences and recipients for the services that this is supposed to provide in substance abuse prevention education would be Hampshire Regional High School. And we're one of five towns. So how do we deliver to that group of students and exclude the others? Or how do we find a way of being inclusive and having towns pulled together into some type of coalition to address this problem for the region? Not just for the regional high school, but, but, you know, around, and including other age groups as well. It's not just primarily directed to the high school, but there are, you know, other, other age groups that would want to be targeted as well. But that's, unless we can solve that issue, that may be a problem in us trying to identify how we can, how we can reach out to that group.
Yeah.
I think there are other, other populations that would benefit from education. I mean, there are towns that are supporting it through the senior center. There are a lot of, lot of people use cannabis products, and there have been people going to the emergency rooms, you know, like, I don't, I think that, obviously, teenagers are identified as a primary audience, but you have a daycare center right next to the cannabis place, reaching out to parents about safe storing, reaching out to Norris Schools, starting with grade five and six seniors. I, I wouldn't hold up.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I said that that was one of the target audiences, and definitely, other age groups would be included in this. But in putting together this coalition, we need to be able to, to address the entire group, target group.
Don't disagree, Francine, but I, I still want to keep us clear that the opioid settlement stuff is one thing.
Right.
We're talking about the cannabis money for Southampton.
I understand that.
We have to focus on.
And if you want to focus on the cannabis for Southampton, and you want to provide services to the students at Hampshire Regional, how do we carve out the Southampton students, separate and apart from everybody else?
You don't. You don't. That's the short answer.
Well, then, then we would have to, you know, say, and give the green light, which we can do, that we're going to provide the services, and it will be to the general student body.
Well, the key is you don't give 75% of the funds to Hampshire Regional. I mean, you just give it a reasonable amount to do.
I didn't, I didn't say that.
I know you didn't, I'm just saying that, you know, one way to decrease the perception that we're giving our money away to other towns is, we recognize that it's important, we have 50% of the students at the school, and we give us, you know, a certain amount towards teenagers, and we give another amount towards all the other populations in town.
Through the other age groups, and that, that would, that would be fine.
Yeah.
We just need to, that would, let's see what they come up with, and then we need to be able to tell them that.
Yeah, and I think, I think part of it would depend on the activity that was designed, right? You know, that whatever the activity was going to be, whatever kind of educational activity.
Right.
That would, you know, sort of determine the, the group that would be the most likely population. I mean, there would, I would envision that there would be multiple educational opportunities.
But first, we need a committee of people to plan those, those services.
Yeah.
And that's, that's.
Yeah.
And I think, I think maybe at the next meeting, we should have some resolution. The budget, I think, everything else coming in, all at the same time.
Yep, okay, yeah. Do we have a clue on the reserve fund offhand? No?
Five fifty.
Five fifty, okay.
Oh, that's not bad. That's more than I thought, huh?
Mm-hmm, okay, well, that's a start.
Did you have any other need for that? I mean, I know that the utility prices are higher, there are things that aren't covered at this point, that you had sort of thought about using that for?
No.
No, even no other current designation on it. Okay, so let's, we'll, we'll bring it back up on Tuesday. I'll reach out in the meantime, just to find out another block of time.
Thank you.
And see if we can go from there, okay? All right, any other business that can't wait until our next?
Did you want to mention about the hearings?
Uh, yeah.
About the hearings, about the naming thing?
Yes, Francine, you want to do that?
Okay.
The hearing on, the public hearing on, well, two things, actually. Let me give you two announcements.
Right.
For the, the bylaws thing on the 10th, yeah?
Yeah, there's a bylaw, there's a public meeting on Monday, the 10th, at seven o'clock right here, at which there will be a demonstration by a representative of General Code, that's the company who helped transition our bylaws from essentially, I, I know they're on the website, but paper and pencil, to a, to a web-based system. They re-codified, they reorganized, they.
Re-numbered.
Yeah, everything is re-numbered, basically. They put in the ability to, to, to search, to cross-reference between bylaws on certain topics. You know, if it's a water issue that transcends, you know, a couple of different, different bylaws, it will, it will identify all of those. It's, and the reason we want to have it demonstrated, because it's a, it's a very user-friendly system, and it's very easily accessed. But demonstrating to people what we've been working on, or they've been working on for the last year and a half to two years, to get us from the type of bylaws that I think are difficult for people to access, difficult for people to understand, I think that's all changed with, with this new system. It's brought us all up to date in terms of the applicable regulations and state laws and so on and so forth. So I, I think it puts us in a good place. So we're going to be demonstrating that here on Monday night. We have made arrangements to have that session recorded, and hopefully, it will serve as a tutorial in case people, it's not going to be broadcast, it will be recorded, so that people can access it at a later date, who may not have been able to participate, and go back with maybe several times if they need to, in terms of understanding how the system works and how to use it. So we want to facilitate this, so to make, to encourage people to use it, because it's a tremendous resource, instead of having people call town hall or look through themselves and become frustrated with, with the way our bylaws are constructed right now.
And just to add, the, the reason for this, too, is that this is going to be part of the, one of the articles on the town meeting warrant.
Right.
So that the whole re-codification process, we had voted on having the E-code 360 people do this a couple of, well, a couple of years ago, I think.
Yes.
For both the general and the zoning bylaws, so at, one of the articles on the warrant will be the actual re-codification of, of the bylaws. So this is a next, a chance to just get a little bit familiar with what that's going to look like.
Right.
Okay, and the second one, on the 14th, the naming, bylaw naming hearing? Nope. Okay.
We have two naming schedules.
Yeah, we did.
Someone, yes.
It's been scheduled.
That was some, yes.
It's posted on our town website. Hang on, let me just drag it up. So we have had two requests.
For names, yes.
Yeah.
But that's not about the bylaw.
No, I just want to give two, two meeting dates next week.
Okay.
So the 10th, on Monday, right? And that's Monday, I think it is? And then on Friday, the 14th, the select board is holding a, basically, a, a, a public, a public hearing to talk about two requests for naming rights. And these are basically in conjunction with our current bylaws that have been approved that are related to naming of structures in town. And so we have a request from one, from the Garska family, to name the East Street Bridge for John Garska, who was a town resident, veteran and former highway superintendent for over 30 years.
And treewarden.
And treewarden, I believe, too, maybe. And also from the Park Commission to name a proposed playground at Le Bree Field, Matty's Magical Playground, in memory of Matty Schmidt. So we were going to have a, just a hearing, just to present those two ideas to the public. Everybody's invited on, it's going to be in-person at 6:00 PM here in this room on Friday, April 14th.
It's not on the calendar yet.
Okay, it'll get on the.
I know, I mean, that's why I was just.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
It's on the website, maybe it didn't make it to the calendar yet.
How long do you anticipate that hearing being on a Friday night?
I would think not more than an hour, less. I mean, it would be.
It hasn't been posted yet, can we do it a little bit earlier?
We have to do it on a Friday?
Well, it's been posted on the, on the website and elsewhere, so I think, I think, we were trying to allow for anybody that would come after work, and I didn't know about, if, assuming the family would come, some people, the family would come.
I know the family of the Garskas are coming.
But I, you know, so we just kept it at our usual six o'clock time.
You know, technically, I don't think the park has to have, they can name it without us. I mean, it, doesn't it say, it's, if it's more than a quarter of the structure, part of the, no?
I don't know.
I'm just asking. They named, they named a field without coming to us.
Well, and I think that's the reason, too, that we decided we'd better have some guidelines to do this kind of thing.
Okay.
So that we were all clear on it. So I don't know, without looking at it again, reading out that one, but the purpose is to, to look at both of these. So I would say, you know, assuming that somebody would represent the family making the request, they'd come make the request, we'd hear anybody saying anything pro, anybody con, take a, take a listen to both of those, and, you know, take a vote. And that basically, again, puts it on the, on the town meeting warrant, if I'm correct, Ed. These would have to be approved still at town, town meeting. So this is a precursor to the town meeting warrant.
Okay.
So I don't think it would take, and this, I'm, you know, maybe 45 minutes at the most, maybe? I would, I would think this shouldn't take long. But it was an attempt to try and make the warrant deadline. We've had the request in from one family for two years now, so we were waiting for the bridge to get finished. Okay, so the two big meetings next week, 10th and the 14th. All right. Yes.
Can I go back to the question about the payment for the facilitator? I know, Ed, you're probably going to look at what possibilities there are, but I'm just noticing, are we going to be able to address the expense report? Because that might be a helpful thing to do before we try to find where money is. But I was just looking that the legal fund is only 50% spent. I know, obviously, we're going to have a lot of bylaws and town meeting stuff, but right now, is there a lot of things that's currently encumbered in the legal expense? Because it's only 50% spent, that just seems like a logical place to have arbit, you know, mediate.
We get billed about two months behind, number one. And number two is, yeah, this particular town meeting has a chance to go through a lot of that with those funds.
Yeah.